All right, very good. Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call to order the August 13th Larkspur Planning Commission regular meeting. Let's first take a roll call.
Chair Chalmers is absent. We have Vice Chair Swisher.
Yep, I'm here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Hull.
Here.
And Commissioner Wagstaff.
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, so can I open the meeting first with any public comments of items not on the agenda? Anything not on the agenda tonight? Anybody wants to speak to? All right, great. Let's actually, let's go over and approve the minutes from the last meeting. I was absent for that. So Brock, why don't I'll have you speak to that.
Okay, I am moved that we approved the meetings to the last, the minutes to the last meeting.
A second. Commissioner Wagstaff.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Hull.
Yes.
And Commissioner Swisher.
Abstain.
The motion carries.
Excellent.
Very good. Which next one? Yeah, do we have, sorry.
Community Development Director's report.
I'd just like to report that next Tuesday night on August 20th will be the special meeting date of the Planning Commission to hear the general plan and housing element. And that meeting is going to be held at the Creps Conference Room at Redwood High School at 7:00 PM. And then the City Council will be considering those documents or is tend to be at this point scheduled to consider them on September 4th. Their regular meeting here at City Hall, the location might change depending on how much interest there is at the Planning Commission hearing. And that's all I have to report.
All right, excellent. Let's see, so next is our main issue, which is concerning One Redwood Avenue, APN 021044-08. Kenneth Holder applicant, Jeff and Leanne Traian owners, R1. Fert Residential Zoning District Project Number 2410. Would you like to review with the, do you want me to go over it first or go ahead?
I can handle it.
Why don't you do that? That'd be awesome.
Okay, good evening Commissioners. The item before you is PLN 2410, which proposes to demolish an existing residence at One Redwood Avenue and construct a new 4,021 square foot two-story residence with an attached ADU. The requested entitlements for the project are design review, floor area exception, a slope use permit, a variance and a heritage tree removal. The proposed residence will be placed more centrally on the lot than the existing structure, which can be seen outlined in this dashed red here, which doesn't quite show up too well on the big screen. And I've got the proposed floor plans here for you. The main floor on the excuse me, main floor on the left side includes the kitchen, living area and bedroom for the residents. The lower floor includes the garage, entry foyer, storage space and mechanical room for the residents as well as a two-bed, two-bath ADU. The project proposes two covered parking spaces and two uncovered guest spaces, which do meet the off-street parking requirements from the municipal code. Here are the proposed elevations. The home and the ADU would be a much more contemporary design than the previous structure, which is outlined in red on the applicable elevations. Exterior finishes include stucco and wood siding, anodized aluminum window, windows and a membrane roof with a pitch of a quarter inch per foot. Due to the slope of the lot, the allowed floor area ratio is 0.25, which amounts to 1,935 square feet. The entire structure is 4,021 square feet, however, there as it's mentioned in the staff report, the ADU is exempt from that calculation. So that's a 775 square foot deduction and they have a storage area that is more than 50% below grade. So a little more than 350 square feet of that do not count towards their floor area. So the actual floor area is 2,898 square feet or 0.37. This would place the structure as the 12th largest in terms of floor area in the neighborhood. However, I would just note that a majority of the lots with more floor area are substandard lots that are smaller sized than this subject lot. Yeah, the project proposes to remove two heritage trees, a 19-inch maple and a 34-inch oak. The removal of the oak tree has been brought up by a number of neighbors who were opposed to the removal of the tree. The applicant did provide a study, which you can find in the first few pages of the plan sets that show a design which may keep the tree in place. However, it doesn't go into specifics on the floor plan or any interior layout. The project requires approximately 498 cubic yards of cut and fill, which does trigger the requirement for a slope use permit. Much of the required grading is needed in order to construct the garage in the home as designed, and there is limited site grading for the driveway and other aspects of the site improvements. The grading was reviewed by a city consultant who found the proposed work acceptable and provided some best practices for implementation during construction. Lastly, the project requires a variance to reduce the front yard setback. As noted on the plan set, the required setback is 20 feet. The project proposes a garage, garage, excuse me, which is 13 feet, six inches from the property line and a front entry structure, which is nine foot, 10 inches from the property line. Per the municipal code, the covered front entry can project into a front yard setback. However, it's limited to a maximum of six feet. So the proposed entry encroaches beyond that a further four foot, two inches. Staff is supportive of the variances. It's likely that any similar project would require a reduced setback in order to avoid any excessive grading on site. We have received a number of public comments on the project, all of them, I would say generally opposed to the size and the bulk of the structure, as well as the removal of the oak tree, as I had noted earlier. Many comments, I just want to note, many comments requested the allowed construction hours be modified to start later in the day. You do have the ability to condition that. I would just note that that's very hard for staff to enforce for a single project site. And as noted in my written report, staff does have concerns about the bulk and the mass of the structure. Staff finds that the 12-foot plate height of the main residence and the large front entry increased the perceived bulk and mass of the structure and that the proposed floor area is excessive for a one-bedroom home. As such, staff cannot make the findings noted on the screen as they relate to the design review application and the floor area ratio exception. Finally, staff recommends that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing, consider public testimony and recommend the applicant reduce the size and bulk of the primary residence and continue the item to a future meeting. If instead the commission believes that it can make all the required findings to approve the project, the commission should find the project exempt from CEQA under a Class II CEQA exemption and make verbal findings regarding the floor area and bulk and mass of the structure and approve the project subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions and I know the project architect and owners are here as well. Thank you.
I did one question. You said heritage tree removal, but it's heritage trees if I understand.
Yes, sorry, I used the singular. But yes, there, there's a total of five trees for removal. Two of them are heritage trees.
One, one a maple and the other a live oak, is that right?
Okay.
Because in the staff report, there's a mention of a redwood tree, which I think is
Oh, yes, that was a typo, my mistake.
Okay.
I, I had a quick question relative to the area of the house, because I had a heck of a time adding up those numbers. Because there's some that's below grade. And I got a different number. I got a number that you got originally, which I think was 3246.
So I think that number does not include that 50% subgrade storage area, because that's
Two areas indicated on there, on here. One of which is let's see. There, there's, so they're, they're adding in areas that count and then subtracted out an area that isn't, doesn't seem to, isn't indicated on the floor plan. So I, I don't know, I just, I came up with a bigger number, but let me pull up. And, and I also couldn't see, it's so tiny that you with my magnifying glass. So exemptions under subtotal. They have a 348 square foot exemption, but they've already accounted for only the area that's above, that's not below the 454 square feet, which has a ceiling height of seven feet.
So I have, I have the, the lower floor plan up on the screen here. So this is the exemption space that they're, they're using here. This is the 50% below grade, 300 and I'll have the number right in front of me, 348 square feet. And then 106 of that does count as, as floor area because it's not 50% below grade.
So where's the 454 square feet that is above, is higher than seven feet, which says basement? It's the, like, the third line down or?
Ah, I see. Ah, let me. So I believe that is the entry foyer, but the architect may be able to
Okay.
to confirm. Okay. Any other comments from anybody before we call the architect and the owner to present? Okay, so do we have the architect and owner to present, please?
Hello, my name is Kenneth Holder from Holder Parlet, Architecture and Landscape. As you may know, I've been here a number of times to present. And I've also presented my own home in front of the Planning Commission. So it's important for me that you know how much I appreciate that you take your time and effort to make this process happen. It's a really critical step. So I'm also, I'm happy to represent Jeff and Leanne Traian. Some of the most pleasant clients I think I've ever had. I find them to be very approachable. I think they have been interested in a really sincere effort to find an appropriate house for this lot. They, they have family connections that go back more than one generation. They've got grandparents that are connected to Larkspur. The plan is that when this house is complete, it would become their forever home. So I think they're very invested in, in neighbor relations and open to the feedback that we're getting. So while developing the design, it's been underway for several years, actually. It started a number of years ago. It, it was a little untenable. There's a, there's an unoccupied parcel. Do you mind putting up this, maybe the site plan or my set of drawings would be great? There's a, an unexpected, I guess we're calling it an alley on the site plan that's about 19 feet wide. And we took a break to try to see if that parcel was available. It sort of shows here. Turns out it was just really untenable to ever get ownership of that. So that, but I'd just like for you to consider that creates sort of an effective setback much bigger than you'd normally expect. It's, it, I believe it started as maybe a sewer easement. It's owned by one of the original inhabiting families in the area. So, so we're, we're, we, we, once that was set aside, we weren't going to be able to obtain that. We move forward with what we've got here. But I will say the initial arborist report, when we started pursuing this, it was a little disturbing because the, the arborist was not really in support of us retaining that tree. He considered it to be, you know, you can see sort of the sketches that were developed that it was largely below in elevation below the tree. Do you mind going to the A4, A0.4, the previous sheet? Actually, the one there. So we first, we had this site plan. It was going to be tricky to, to place a garage on the site. It was going to be an awkward turn to get into a garage, but we were retaining that tree. And then we just masked the house in a sensible way around it and placed a lot of the house in occupying the existing area as a way to sort of minimize this, this, the felt change for the neighbors. So if you go to the next page. Our arborist was not very pleased. He, he made it clear that there's a series of different critical root zones, structural root zone drip line that we were just violating all of those, that he was very uncomfortable with this idea that we would be placing a house so extensively in that drip room and in several places encroaching right to the point of the structural, the critical reason that he considered off limits. The driveway, to even make that driveway work and any kind of city standards was going to require four and a half, almost four-foot retaining wall. You can see an orange that sort of leads to the two-car garage. We were able to in a way, sort of create two off-street parking spaces, but it was, it was going to be an awkward solution. It's worth going to the next page just to look at that. Is this A0.6? Yeah, this one starts to show sort of a section through the site. Shows the garage and then, of course, you can imagine the rest of the house well below that drip line. The, the base elevation of that tree is at 114.6. The driveway would have to go in at about 104.6. That's 10 feet down. That's an awkward placement to put under a tree. And so he really, he didn't legally say I'm signing off on this, but he was a strong recommendations that that tree was not a stable specimen, given that a large amount of the root base that you would normally account for a tree of that weight was, was, had already been cut away a long time ago to make room for a previous cardboard or garage structure. It's very clearly graded there. So, so we looked at this, you know, this goes back, like I said, a couple of years ago. And, and if you're not going to get your arborist approval, it was very hard for us to pursue this approach. On top of that, he reminded us that there were so many overlapping wooey setbacks, drip zones. You're supposed to have your, the drip line trimmed back 10 feet from any structure. That's, I mean, if there was, there was, you can, I, if you want to really take the time to understand it, let's just say that didn't leave us much of a building envelope at all. So it started to feel pretty hopeless. We kind of frankly gave up on that approach. It just didn't seem sensible to build a brand-new home with this. I think this section kind of shows you where it really was so discouraging. So we kind of set that aside. I mean, part of the beauty of the site is this oak tree. Very sad moment to have to kind of say it wasn't going to work. So, so yeah, so that was the initial process that got us then. So we kind of moved on from there and so it, you know, it's, I just hope it's important. I hope that people can remember the effort that's gone through to get to this point. It was years in consideration. So to date, there, you know, there's been obviously a lot of neighborhood concern, understandably. This site is centrally located. For a long time, the neighborhood has enjoyed the sense of open space. No one's been occupying the lot. I mean, the house that's there, I think, was abandoned decades ago. There was actually a lot of illegal excavation under the structure. It's, there's almost, it's completely uninhabitable. So people have been enjoying it for parking, open space and views for a long, long time. So I think no matter what, I think we got to consider any new home is going to be an abrupt change. So we want to consider that. That's, that's very real. People are losing that open space. They're losing the parking. But it's also a very challenging site to build on. We didn't have a lot of options. There's going to be tremendous effort to repair some of the illegal excavation that's been done. There's a huge hole underneath that red structure. It goes down. I don't know how many feet down. I don't know what they were doing, like building a basement under the structure. There's going to be a considerable effort to build a new home on this lot. So really, I guess the point I'm trying to make is that the feasibility, the economic feasibility did probably suggest a larger home was the only way to make sense. If we stayed true to the lot coverage ratio of the floor area ratio of 25%, it would be a 1,900 square foot house, including the garage. I think by today's standards, that is a tiny house. There's no way that pencil to even build. I frankly, I don't have it in here, but I actually was going to buy this lot for myself. And I said, it is so infeasible to build on, other than a large house. I actually went and bought the house that I did, the lot over here. So I feel for my clients that, you know, that to basically make it work financially, it did require us to look at a larger house that financially made sense. Now, they're, they're empty nesters. They have grown children. The idea was they only needed a one-bedroom home. So it's been brought up. That's a little odd that the house only has one bedroom. So I, and you know, overall, we shared some of that. It's, it's not something you see. So, but at the same time, the ADU downstairs, when you have two adult children that still live in the area, it actually has a fairly attractive, sort of overall programmatic plan to it. So just wanted to make those points clear. Just a couple of other quick ideas that's worth discussing. If you've been to the site and you look at the story polls, I don't think they're nearly as massive as the 2D elevation suggests. The way, we could have probably done a better job, but if you look at the three-dimensional renderings, I think that more accurately tells the story. The massing of the house is much more clear. Yeah, could you go to, yeah, this page. I think this faded. Oh. Can you have the very last page? The material sheet. Now, I, I mean, I think this is a we can talk about the massing and I think the owners, given the feedback are absolutely open to some incremental change for sure. It's the height, I think we could bring the height down. I think we looked at it early. We could bring it down a foot or two easily without any, without disrupting the design. We could even maybe lower the finished floor elevation of the main level that we figured out since we've gotten this feedback, we're starting to look at, we could bring that down. So there could be overall a three-foot reduction in the roof line if necessary. Those are the kind of things, but I'd like for you to just look at the design. We feel like it's a sensible house that attempts to use mass reducing techniques. We modulated it. We changed the materials. We avoided a pitched roof. I think in this case, it would have been too high and it would have been more disruptive to views. We felt like the flat roof actually helps overall make the house feel smaller. So that was, oh, and then answer Commissioner Wagstaff to your question. I would love to, if you could bring up that table on the planning data, because it, it's so funny, because we both reviewed it, but I know what you might be talking about is basement 454. The way that the standard Larkspur this table, we always religiously state at the printed table, ask you to put everything in and then you deduct it out. So we have the basement and the 454 number is the, is the gross area of that basement. The lower floor is included above all the entry and the auxiliary spaces. I can't even read the number right up at lower. Or what was that number? 344 plus 454. And then we're, the way the table is written, you're then back it all back out if it's exempt. So when you go down below the subtotal, the exemptions are the 348 is the part that's below grade. The portion of that kind of unconditioned basement area, not all of it is exempt. Not all of it has full, it's, it's quite confusing, but in the, if you're looking at the floor area diagrams, right about two-thirds of the way through the mass, through that basement, it suddenly is no longer 50% below grade. So the number changes. So that's why there's 348 and 454. We concluded the gross amount of basement area, there we go. 454, all of this unconditioned space that isn't attributed to something else. And then we deducted out now. This drawing says 296. There's the, that's, that's three, I think it's 354.
I think it's 296 plus the laundry room, right?
Oh, is it? Plus the laundry room. You're right. Those two numbers together. Thank you. Right. I thought that was my one typo for the project. I guess we checked these numbers pretty religiously. So hopefully that helps you understand our perspective. Open to feedback, understand the neighborhood concern about the tree. We're concerned too. But our, the arborist that I always use, that I've always trusted, he didn't want, he, he just said he didn't know that he could preserve it. And given a, a live oak tree placed above a house, he says, he was literally, I think he was going to put us on notice and say he was gonna literally say he didn't think we could keep it. So, all right, any other questions?
Um, do you, just curious, do you have a statement from the arborist in that report? Because I didn't see that in the report about the alternative plan and his objections to that.
Uh, well, the, I think the most specific wording he gave to, if you can go to A0.5 on there, it's, he didn't, he gave his assessment of the tree and said it posed a hazard or something. I forget the exact wording. Go back. It's right in here. And he, yeah, here he states it here. This page, I don't know if you have A0.5. We try to, I know you're looking at a half-size plan.
No, I've got, I've got, I've got the arborist.
The arborist report. So this paragraph one, at the very end, I think he says, although a retaining wall might help stabilize the soil around this tree, the tree could also stabilize any proposed retaining wall. And I can't read the rest, but it was pretty, it was pretty clear language. He didn't really want a part of it. He's saying he just didn't feel comfortable with the tree that didn't have a healthy root base to put it above your house. And there's some debate about whether it was ever cut, or maybe it grew that way for 100 years. There's, but his assessment was it looked like the grade around it had been changed at some point and was therefore not, didn't have full integrity. So. All right, thank you.
All right. So that I guess we now will go to the section of public comments. So Alex, the, there's a few letters. Do you want to just, we don't need to read those letters, but we should have the individuals if they're here who wrote the letters. So anybody at this point who wants to come up and make a public comment, please do. And keep in mind, we want to try to limit. I mean, this is the only thing on our agenda tonight. So typically we have a three-minute limit on talking, but I think given it's only one agenda, people want to go a little longer. They're welcome to do that. So do we have any public comments? Yeah, and just, yeah, if you could state your name for the record and where you live.
Yeah, sure. My name is Andy Tress and my family and I live at 11 Redwood, which is the adjacent property to One Redwood.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you make sure the microphone in front of you is on? Oh, perfect, okay.
Yeah, I'll speak into it. All right, so I live at 11 Redwood, which is adjacent to One Redwood. And I know I only have three-ish minutes, but I could probably spend about 15 minutes refuting what Mr. Holder just said. Because most of that was inaccurate. Along with probably eight of my neighbors, I think that submitted notes, we have a strong objection to the way this proposed development is being done for a number of reasons. As far as neighborly interaction, there's been little to no communication with between the developer and my neighbors and myself that I'm aware of in the almost four years that the property has been owned. The last conversation that I had with them was at the end of 2021. So since that time, there's been no communication with any of us regarding the project. So listen, the developer knew about the FAR requirements. He knew about the heritage tree ordinances. He knew about the slope of the property when he bought the property. Right? And now he's requesting exceptions across the board for the sole purpose of building a bigger home. Regarding the ordinances, I'm assuming they were put in place by Larkspur for particular reasons. We have a big problem with the scale of the home, which is, as you've seen, 48% larger than the FAR requirement, not including this so-called ADU. It's going to affect us personally, living next door for a lot of reasons. One, the main living space of our house is downstairs, windows at ground level. So there's going to be a significant reduction in light and airflow and all that, but also a big impact on the neighborhood. The current design footprint grossly overpowers what's in the neighborhood today, especially on our block. It's massive. It's concrete. It's It's massive, it's concrete, it's, it's the height and all of it. Um, we have a problem with removal of the healthy heritage tree and I, I, I know, I'm, I'm sure at least one of my neighbors will address the heritage tree issue. Um, again, I think the ordinance is created for a reason and should be considered as a last resort. There are arborist report from a city arborist that disputes everything and, and the other arborist's report. Uh, one question I would have also is why are they removing a healthy maple heritage tree that's not even on the property? Right, so that, that maple tree is on that paper street adjacent, it's not actually on the, uh, on their property. So, um, if the FAR requirements are met, there really should be no reason to not be able to build a, a reasonably, a reasonably sized home on that lot, um, incorporating the trees. Uh, regarding the other areas, we don't have an issue really, uh, with the front entry of the garage setback. I don't think that's going to impact us, I don't think that's going to impact the neighborhood as much. Um, and we do appreciate the sixteen foot distance from our house, the way it's designed right now. So there's aspects that are okay. Um, but all the neighbors that I've spoken to, and, and again, we, we all, you know, have conversations with each other. We're having trouble understanding the justification for why uh, the developer should be able to come in, build a house beyond FAR codes, remove healthy heritage trees. And from what we can see, there's no exception, there's no hardship here. Um, and I see no reason why they should get more square footage, just because they want to build a bigger home on the property. So we urge the planning commission to carefully consider the environmental and community impact that the project's having. Um, we agree with the staff recommendation that they've already determined that this should be uh, reduced in size and the bulk and mass is too big and, and we totally agree. And so I think some of my other neighbors might have some very specific points about the, the tree and other things as well. So thank you for your time.
Great, thank you.
It's a little taller than I.
Yeah, we can lower it.
My name is Linda Allen. I live at three forty Madrone, which is right on the corner of Redwood. So we're also right next door to, um, the proposed property. We've lived there for forty years. Um, so I, a couple of points, probably a lot that Andy already said, and you'll probably hear again. The square footage, again, is, seems very large and dense for the lot. About ten years ago, there was, sorry, I'm a little nervous. About ten years ago, there was new construction at three forty-six Madrone, which is next to us, as well as our house that was built as a spec house, not by us, about forty years ago. And each one of them required a lot of different revisions to get to a size at, something that fit in the area and something that was more buildable. So there was a lot before, um, things were approved. Also, our lot size, if it matters, is almost exactly the same as one Redwood. And our house is twenty-one hundred square feet. Um, the floor area ratio, like he said, is, um, seems pretty big, it's way allowed. Um, the story poles and the area markers, and I think the architect talked about that a little bit. It indicates that the entire structure is going to take up the whole lot. I mean, from top to bottom and side to side, the whole thing. Um, again, heritage tree removal should be exempt if it's a healthy tree, which I think it is. Um, and as noted too, tree six that they want to remove is noted to, to be on neighboring property, but so are five and seven, according to the map. And those are the maples, I think. We also concerned about potential life of privacy. Our main living area looks right into that, into their, um, space. So if there's tree removal, trimming, you know, it's going to be hard to tell from the plans how high that deck would be and where those windows will be and how, if they'll look directly into our home. Um, it does seem like the equipment, parking, that kind of thing is going to be on site, which is really essential for the neighborhood, because there's a lot of kids walking on their bikes, you know, coming down a steep hill. Um, and on the weekends, there's a lot of, uh, parking and people with their dogs walking to go back in the open space. So it's a really kind of a dicey area, it's kind of dangerous. But the fact that they can keep everything off and so emergency equipment and all that kind of stuff is accessible, that's really important. But anyway, so it's, I think it's too massive, too dense, requires too many exceptions. And, um, there's a lot of different styles of homes back there, as you guys probably know. Um, but this seems kind of excessive to the rest of the neighborhood in that area. So, thank you.
Anybody else?
So, good evening, I'm Karina Nigas and I live and own the house on three, three zero Madrone Avenue with its driveway on Redwood Avenue, across the street from the lot in question. My, sorry. My family and I have been living in the house for seventeen years and we chose to be in this location because we love the canyon and the beautiful forest that's around us there. I and many others misunderstood the, by signing the plan blueprint that we were approving the plan. I'm, in fact, I remember specifically telling the person that I was in disagreement with the plan they showed me as I, I and many others disapprove of it. We are very concerned about the size and the style of the structure. We believe that the planning commission should make alterations to the design to better fit the aesthetics of the canyon and the neighborhood, as well as the logistical issues it poses in that position. At the moment, this house is planned without any interest to preserve the canyon and its natural wildfire, wildlife, and it's entirely disrespectful to all who inhabit it. I object to the removal of the heritage trees as they are vital to the ecosystem of this area and should be respected, especially as homes to the highly endangered spotted owl, spotted owl species native to this area. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Holmes afterwards, uh, and yeah, first and then Mr. Holmes. Oh, and there's somebody in the corner, yeah.
Hi, uh, Dale Suther, seventy-one Hatzick. I recognize some familiar faces, because I was here six months ago making the other side of the argument before I started my remodel. Like the owners, I, um, enjoy the rewards, let me get the quote right, the rewards of living in Madrone Canyon with its beautiful wooded character and sense of community. Second sentence in their application. Having lived here for twelve years and having relatives that lived here for thirty years, most of us can have heard stories about scrapers that used to come through, buy a lot, grade all the trees down and build a large, larger than appropriate house. I think that the elected, appointed and hired officials in Larkspur have done a good job restoring balance in what they approve. Um, making sure that, you know, we don't have a tragedy of the commons where everybody comes in and cuts down their heritage trees because it's more convenient for, for their lot. And then rather than living in Madrone Woodlands, we live in Madrone subdivision of townhouses that go right to the edge of the lot. The root of the problem here is that they're making all these decisions based on a house that's too large. I, the architect, the designer, like, I think just made the statement that, well, you know, two thousand square feet for a three bedroom house is, is, is just too small. As the committee knows, I currently live in that house. As the committee knows, I was recently approved to remodel that house and my FAR went down. I don't think it's impossible to build on this lot within the allotted FAR and preserve the tree. I think they started this plan with the idea that they were going to build a McMansion style East Bay giant house and all the decisions flowed from that initial design. I will add a couple, we add one point. Um, it's not encouraging, as somebody that walks that hill every day with my dog, that the contractor that they hired to put up the story poles parked illegally on that blind S curve while they were putting up the story poles. Not the best way to, again, ensure a sense of community. Um, I'm excited that somebody wants to develop this lot. I'm excited that they're looking at ADUs. There's a shortage of housing. The current house is uninhabitable, it's an eyesore. But I'm just not convinced that it needs to be a four thousand foot house that's Tetris'd into a lot that's not adequate in size for a building of that dimension. Thank you.
James Holmes, Larkspur. Uh, the written staff report, uh, identifies five items, uh, where, uh, mass and bulk could be reduced. And I would urge the commission to take them up on all of those suggestions. Suggestion one, twelve foot plate height. Suggestion two, uh, tall covered entry vestibule. Suggestion three, large unbroken, uh, kitchen, living room area. Suggestion number four, large covered entrance area outside the vestibule, I think. And suggestion five, prominent stairwell, uh, staff can correct me if I got any of those wrong. Please take them up on that. Uh, I, it's a step down, uh, plan, maybe you could start by, if the garage is twelve feet, you can start by reducing the height of the garage to whatever is the minimum ceiling size for a garage and then step everything else down proportionally. That's one way to start. Um, I'd like to add one more suggestion. Do we have the material slide? Um, that suggestion would be to, um, require that, this is the ADU, to require that this, that there be, by way of reducing mass, require this to be open. Require that, uh, railing be, uh, some sort of an open railing. Now, they have an open railing on the west side, but strangely enough, they don't have an open railing on the other two sides. I realize that this is a, um, this is a, uh, an ADU and you can't design review the ADU itself, but you, the, uh, patio on top and the railing on top are not really part of the ADU. So therefore, I think you can dictate an open railing and that will reduce slightly, uh, the, the additional mass. And, uh, it just, we should wonder, uh, whether, we should wonder about the idea of putting the non-design reviewed portion right out in front, uh, of a house. I certainly don't think that's quite the idea that, and I, that ADUs were kind of supposed to be in the backyard. Uh, so I, I mean, I don't, I don't know if it's a big issue here, but you know, if, uh, architects are going to put the non, uh, uh, design reviewed portions in front of the house, maybe we should give some thought to, uh, requiring s- uh, some issue of where we put the placement of ADUs, because the, uh, in, uh, the idea, the basic idea is they were supposed to be in the backyard or some other place. Just a couple of other points, if I may. Um, if, uh, under no circumstances should trees be allowed to be cut on an adjacent property. Uh, if that, if Belle Reve, I think it's called Belle Reve, that's actually from Tennessee Williams, although that name, uh, predates Tennessee Williams. But if that property is actually, uh, still part of the right heirs, which I think it is, I could tell a funny story there, but anyway, uh, if, then, uh, no way should anything be cut there. And actually, I did not see, but I wasn't able to refresh my memory as to the basis for cutting the maple tree, because I don't think the maple tree is on the building site. But, uh, uh, under no circumstances should anything on another lot be cut. And just finally, I would just like to remind the, I mean, I have, uh, uh, you know, the oak tree, I'd like to see it, uh, retained, but I'm not sure they could build a house around it that wouldn't even, wouldn't look larger. But anyway, just to remind, uh, the, uh, commission of what the climate action plan addressed by, uh, adopted by the city council specifically says regarding this. It's, uh, page thirty-six, uh, item, uh, section SAC one D. Uh, require that the site planning, construction and maintenance of new development preserve existing healthy trees and native vegetation on site to the maximum extent feasible, period. Replace trees and vegetation not able to be saved. So please do consider that and at a minimum, require an open railing, uh, in the front. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. All right, um, who was next? Someone over here? Mike, you're, uh, you're after that.
Hi, my name's Brian Perry, I live at, uh, sixteen Redwood, directly across from the proposed site. Um, I, I wrote a, a letter previously about the, the oak tree. Um, it's, it's a beautiful specimen of an oak. Um, it is one of the healthiest oaks in the neighborhood. Um, it has not, um, been affected by the sudden oak death that we can determine. It did lose a branch, um, which every tree can do. Um, it's not because it's an unhealthy tree, it's because trees drop branches, um, of every size. It basically, it basically self-trimmed itself, because that, that branch was, uh, the size of a, a tree itself. The arborist report was inaccurate in its, um, in its telling of, of the oak. Uh, the oak and that bank cut are probably about the same age. Um, there are no visible roots in that bank cut, um, because that bank cut is probably about a hundred years old. Um, you can see the foundation from the original, uh, structure that was probably there, which was probably a garage or a, uh, uh, some sort of parking structure. Um, the, the foundation is still, is still there. Um, a good examination of the bank, um, and you can plainly see that there is no cut roots. There's no roots of any sort of that oak tree sticking out. So the oak tree obviously made, um, itself home in the rest of that hillside. Now, the, the question is the drip line. So oak trees are, are pretty good at, at maintaining themselves, even if their roots are disturbed by development. I believe that the oak would do fine. Um, one of the arborist reports said that it's healthy enough and, uh, you know, construction is, is disturbing to all the trees around, uh, the construction site. Um, there's no guarantee that the tree would, would live, but there's no guarantee that any trees will live in that area after the construction is done. Um, there's a tremendously large bay tree at the base of the property, which is on the paper street, I believe, which is right on the edge of the street. And that one is probably in more danger of falling on the new house than any other tree, because bay trees just fall. That's what they do. They grow big, they grow too large for their root system and then the tree falls, because that's a bay. Um, but as far as I know, they're planning on preserving that bay tree, because it's not on their property, I suppose. In the original set of plans, I didn't see that drawing of the alternate garage. Um, I, I, I would assume that that was done later when they saw that there was some objection to the oak tree going in, uh, being saved. Um, or objection to the oak tree being removed. Um, so I'm, I'm wondering how much effort was put into, um, alternates to the design. And I'm wondering, um, I, I don't suppose if I'm, I'm allowed to ask questions of the architect, but I'm wondering why there was no uh, consideration of putting the garage underneath the house at the corner of Madrone and Redwood. Um, that would be a, a good location for a garage, as, as far as I could tell. Um, it would, the entry would be right off of Madrone, um, in the, the wide area of that, of that turnaround there. It would give a large space for a garage if it was, um, underground, um, because you're able to, I believe you're able to go a little bit further into the ground. Um, uh, if it's upgrade. And it, then you, you would have two spaces for garage. And it, then you would have two spaces for a garage underneath the house and still, still two spaces on the, the platform where the parking is right now, and you would be able to build a retaining wall and, and preserve the tree. From what I heard very early on, there was no sense in trying to save the oak tree. There was talk of, of wanting to remove the oak tree right away, because it was there, as they say. In one of their letters, the oak tree is right in the middle of the lot. It's not in the middle of the lot, it's, it's, it's to one-third of the lot. And I don't know that there's real serious consideration to alternates to where the cars are proposed to, to be. I think there's a, there's a lot of creative thinking that can happen with this lot. And the Arborist report, when I read it, I, I was, I was surprised that they, they said the tree was in such poor health, because any, any Arborist I would walk up to that tree would, would dispute some of the findings that they wrote into that. I'm, I'm not convinced that they were actually on-site, because they said that there are cut roots on that bank and there are none. I wasn't expecting to talk tonight. I apologize. It's, the, the lot, as others have said, when the owner bought the lot, he, he knew that there were, there was going to be problems with what they wanted to build and what they had in, what the lot would allow and what they wanted to build. I think at the very beginning, they wanted to go over the FAR and and then here we are. I, I don't think we should cite a precedent for, for allowing this much varying, variances on a, a building. If I want to develop my parking lot across the street, if they are allowed to take out their oak tree, then I should be allowed to take my, out my oak tree without any consideration as to the fact that it's there and is, is probably a heritage tree also, even though that tree is infected with sudden oak death and could die any time. I would try and preserve it, because it's an oak tree and it's part of the neighborhood. It's been there longer than I have and I've been there my whole life. So I think if you set a precedent of allowing these heritage trees and the maple to be removed, then others can cite that they did it, why can't I? And we don't want to set that precedent in this neighborhood. As you all well know, the oak trees are susceptible to sudden oak death, which is controllable by a fungicide, which is sprayed on trees either annually or semi-annually, and so far has proven to be successful in, in preserving trees, oak trees that are in danger of dying from the sudden oak death. Any oak tree in the canyon that's not sprayed is in danger of, of succumbing to sudden oak death. And this tree, if it's properly maintained, properly trimmed, properly sprayed, will be a magnificent tree for a very long time and, and would be a center point to any well-designed house that goes into that lot. I think if, if a backyard with a, a nice retaining wall up to the base of that tree were, were put in and there was consideration to letting water soak into the ground, that tree would be very happy and would look beautiful with a house next to it. And the maple tree, I understand that there's quite a lean on that maple tree. It's actually not that bad of a lean, considering all the other maple trees in the neighborhood that have a lean on him, which is just about every other maple tree. They don't fall unless the ground is just severely disturbed or saturated around the base of the trees. That maple tree will continue to grow and stand until we're all gone. And to cut it down because it's there and because it's above the house, I don't know that there's a good reason to do that. Trimming it would be great. Reducing some of the load on the tree would be great. I'm sure the tree would appreciate that. But just removing it because it's there, especially since it's not on their property, is, is, is not a good reason.
Okay, we could, well, let's, I think we, any, if you have any, any other points, any other main points? All right. Thank you. Dr. Allen.
Well, thank you for the time, Jeff and other commissioners. I live at 340 Madron, have been there for 40 years, and I can testify that that oak tree has had that cut for at least 40 years. And I knew Chris, the former owner, quite well. He had the unfortunate problem of death, which will happen to all of us. But he always said he had two, had a problem with that house. He had no time and not enough money. And he, he desperately wanted to fix it up. And that's what the excavation underneath of it, he attempted to stabilize the upper part of the house. There actually, when it really rains hard, there's a stream that comes underneath that house and actually runs right underneath, comes out underneath the, I guess it's the southwest part of the foundation and goes into the, into the, into the curb. So I would caution the architect and the, and the new owner to be aware that there is a potential of an underground water hazard in that area. Regarding the maple tree, that is not on their property. It's in the paper street or easement. And that manhole, I don't believe, has anything to do with the, the property that was referred to as being owned by long-term Larkspur folks. I actually looked at that property years ago and ran into a problem I, that they weren't interested in selling. And I actually told the new owner about that property and I was, and it sounds like he pursued the same tact, probably to increase the lot size. Regarding lot size, our house is, has a similar lot. And when it was approved, the owner, the architect, Michael Sands, wanted to put in a 3,000, 3,500-foot home higher up on the hill. And he wound up putting in one that, at that time, was 2,180 square feet. I understand from Alex that since, things, times have changed and now an unheated garage is considered part of the residence size. And so our house is, is, is 27-something now because of the garage. But at the time it was approved, it was 2,180. Next door at 346, the developer there, who was going to, quote, "live in the house," of course, wanted another, at least you can look at your records, but I believe it was over 3,000 square feet up higher on the hill, just like Mr. Sands did. There were problems, again, with the neighbors and the size of, of the lot and the slope. And it was reduced to, I believe, a little over 1,600 square feet. So the precedent is there for not approving these large, border-to-border huge houses in this area. And I would plead to the commission to continue that history. In regards to being informed by the new owner, he did come by our house on two occasions with the early plans. And we met and discussed, discussed them with him, which was, I thought, a good sign. But that was four years ago, and I haven't heard from him since. I have contacted him twice by email, asking him to please take care of the property. There have been no leaf removal. The, the main part of the lot that is not, is behind the house, the current house, is, you know, foot and a half tall dry grass. And we live in a high fire zone area. That is one way out. And I, I'm just distressed that he has not taken care of the property or shown any concern with the neighbors regarding the fire hazard that currently is on that property. One other thing I would mention regarding the cut for the oak tree. At our house, we have three redwoods on the immediate west side of the house. And the roots were cut on the east side, approximately no more than four feet from the foundation, maybe three feet. And that was done in 1981. And as we know, redwoods have shallower roots, but the, we've had a lot of wind and the trees are still there. And so I, I, I really wonder about the validity of the, of the reports that we're getting about, about that tree. That tree actually is actually leaning, as I look at it, is leaning over Redwood. And if it should come down, it probably is not going to come down on the house. It's probably going to fall on the street. Then I don't think it's going to come down at all. I think that that's about all I wanted to say, except I did notice a survey discrepancy. When I look at my original plans, which I have a copy of, the the west line of the easement or paper street actually bisects part of the original structure. It looks like about a foot or two. Whereas the new survey is well three or four feet to the west. So it's, so the old structure is completely within, in the, the new survey. So I can't explain that discrepancy, but it's concerning. So thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Allen. Do we have any other comments? Great. So let's take it to the panel. As, since I'm chair tonight, I don't have to go first, which is good. You're taking all kinds of copious notes, so why don't you go first? Oh, well, now you're not.
Okay, so I, I am pleased to see that we have a, a good turnout tonight. I, I think I say this a lot, most meetings when we have people, people come, but this is, this is city government and this is the way it works. So thank you all for coming out and making your voices heard. So in terms of, of this project, I, I guess I had a quick question to start out, maybe for the architect. We've had quite a few comments about the maple tree that's on the easement or the alley, in the alley. And I'm curious to know if there, what's the reasoning behind that? You know, if you have agreement from the, that property owner to remove the tree, then seems like kind of a non-issue, but I was.
I might jump in here. Yes, that is public right-of-way and the municipal code does allow, if the city officials, they can't agree to removal of, of trees on the public right-of-way. So Public Works reviewed it and had no issues with the removal of that tree from the right-of-way. As to why it's being proposed for removal, the architect could answer that better than I could.
Page 15 of the Arborist report, that's in the, in the staff report, shows severe trunk lean. And it's the way it's placed that the upper crown would, would actually, yeah, there's a series of photos in the Arborist report, and I think it's the very last one, or it's the second to the last one, that, and they, he called it out as severe trunk lean and that it would hang over the proposed house. I don't think that there would be any objection to keeping a tree. We might prune it, but I think it was that, I, I might actually make the point, it's actually not, I'm not sure that it's technically public, unless it's been deeded by this family trust. I'm not sure that it's. Right. The long 19-foot alleyway. It's interesting, because the owners did do years of approach to finding out really who owned it. And it turns out that in, in conversation with Department of Public Works, they said, "We'll quit claiming it to you as the owner or split it between the two neighbors, but we don't have the authority." They said it's not city property. So it actually makes it more complicated that I don't think it's, I think it's technically privately owned. And so I would say we, if there's any concern, we just remove it, make it a condition that we just, I mean, we retain the, the tree, would be my suggestion. I think it was, I, I, I think it was that it didn't sound like it was affecting anyone, but given that removal of trees is a serious issue, I think we would, the owners would be perfectly fine with retaining the tree. So, yeah, so I just, yeah, I just wanted, while I'm here, I just wanted to make the point, this is what my grandfather used to always say, "The definition of a, of a consultant is a very smart person who happens to agree with you." And I'm, so I'm thinking about the Arborist report as our consultant. This is what we got. And it would be at least worth reading that section about the tree where towards the end, he's quite clear, sorry, I just missed that page. But it is important to, you know, if you were the owner, would you rely on, "Well, I believe the tree should be okay"? That, that belief, we believed it would be okay too, but when we got this report, it was, it didn't, it didn't lead us to believe the true, the tree was okay. So that was, it's, it would seem unwise to disregard our consultant. So, yeah, it would be worth, at the very list, very end of page two of the Arborist report, I won't read the whole paragraph, but he just says, "There is evidence of a recent and significant branch failure over the existing driveway cut. Due to a significant soil cut, lack of large support roots of the side of the tree and the instability of the soil cut area, the oak tree does not, or does have a high potential for collapse under saturated conditions accompanied by high-wind events. I have not determined that it's an imminent hazard, but a risk of collapse is likely." So when you hear language like that, it makes it hard to imagine putting in a, a new house under it. So, thank you.
Interesting definition of consultants, because I don't know if you've ever known a hospital consultant, but it's the opposite. Anyway.
Okay, so I, I guess that kind of answers the question. So in, in terms of the oak tree, I, I think I generally agree with what Mr. Holmes said, is that I, I would also like to see that a mature oak tree be, be saved, but it's, it is a, you know, a small lot and we have a professional who's telling the applicant that they don't think, in their professional opinion, that it's, it would be wise to build a house beneath that tree. So I think, I think that I can make the findings for, for that, that tree. The slope use permit, I, I, so I'm just going through the, the the five items that, that are, are on our, on the staff report. The slope use permit, I, I think it seems like, in, in my opinion, grading that amount of, of, of soil is, is not a, I can make the findings for that, because it is overall going to help lower the, the, the building and, you know, bring it into the, into the hillside a little bit more. And similar with the front setback for the garage. We, we see this quite a bit, I think, with these corner lots that are sort of oddly shaped, is that they sometimes require encroachment into that variant, into the. encroachment into that variant, into the, the yard. In terms of the, the floor area, I think is where it gets a little bit tricky and floor area and design review. This, this property is above average. The, the request is, I guess, above average for the neighborhood. But what that doesn't include is the 775 square foot ADU, which is a state mandate that we don't really have a ton of control over. So I think that, that I guess presents an interesting problem. I, I think that there are some mass reducing techniques, lowering the building, creating a sort of clear rail, railing on the upper balcony that could be employed. But those are sort of my, my initial thoughts.
Okay. So I'd like to save the oak tree. It is in an awkward spot. I've looked at that tree. It looks as healthy as any oak tree I've seen. I'm not an arborist. I don't, I didn't see any indication that the tree was stressed or in trouble. On the other hand, it's in a difficult location, no matter what you do design-wise. And I have to say, in general, I like the design of the house. I also think the house is too big and it's, it's over the FAR, even not including the, the ADU. And with the ADU, it's, it's a, it's a really big house. So I'd like to see the house size reduced somewhat. I think it's 12-foot plates, 10-foot plates are really pretty, pretty nice and generous. And you could probably lower the lower floor. So I think you could get the building down two or three feet without a, without changing it much. The floor, so the floor area exception is, is the, the thing I'm having trouble with. I think it's a, it's a huge house for that site. I'd like to see it reduced somehow. And you know, the tree removal, again, I think it's going to be very difficult to, to build a house on that site and, and keep that tree. So I'm, I would keep an open mind if there's a way to save it. I think that would be great. I think it's a healthy tree.
I echo a lot of the comments from my fellow commissioners. Design review, I do think the house is too large for the site. Going to the floor area exception, I, I, I just think that's too high of a floor area ratio, not including the ADU. And, and I'll be honest, for, you know, just the design overall, when I look at it, and my first thought was like, okay, one bedroom. And then, you know, seeing that the two-bedroom ADU is downstairs, it's like, how quickly is this going to be converted to a three-bedroom house? And who's, who's going to be following up on that? So I, I'll be honest, I'm suspicious on that. It just doesn't seem, you know, just having such a large one-bedroom house doesn't seem logical to me. And then having the two-bedroom ADU attached downstairs, you know, it just really looks like it's, you know, a, a way to get a three-bedroom house in there. That's just my own personal opinion. The variance for the garage, I don't have, you know, a big problem with that. The slope use permit, you know, the 498 cubic yards doesn't seem that outrageous. And it sounds like there's a big hole to be filled anyway in the old, underneath the old house. I also would like to try to save the oak tree. I think that that's kind of our charge as a commission. But I also agree with Commissioner Wagstaff. I, I, I'm not an architect, but I looked at it, it was like, I would be really, I can see how, you know, it is a difficult design challenge to try to save it. But maybe with a smaller house, I don't know. I'm not the architect. So I challenge Mr. Holder.
So I think this is a very nice looking house, but not on this lot. I think it's a, you know, it would be nice somewhere else. I don't think this is the house that's designed, that's, that's destined to be on a lot like this, especially in the canyon. I used to live at 377 Madrone and a lot of the people here, it used to be my neighbors. And I would probably be on that side saying the same thing that you people are saying now about this property. It's a beautiful place to live. But I think this house is a sore thumb in that place, given its design. And it's a beautiful design. Don't get me wrong. I think it's a really nice design, just not for this lot. I think there is a hierarchy of trees and I mean, it's, it's unfortunate to say that, but you know, bay trees may be at the bottom, redwoods are in the middle, live oaks are, should be at the top. You know, this area used to be teeming with live oaks and the death of live oaks has been a really tragic, tragic for California. I was able to listen to a lecture on an oak expert here about a year and a half ago, and he's written this beautiful book on oaks. And it's amazing what they do as far as habitat for owls, for, for everything. It's just, they're amazing trees. And I think we should do as much as we can to preserve oak trees. So I'm not in favor of giving a exception to remove this oak. So I think some architectural way has got to be given to try to figure out how to preserve this oak tree. Because it is a healthy tree. I did go out and look at it and it's a beautiful tree. It would be a tragedy to take it out. It's, it's older than all of us. I think I have no problem with the offset. I have no problem with the, the grading. I think the house should be reduced to something in the range of 2,000, 2,100 square feet and not 3,000 square feet. It just is, doesn't fit the lot. And unfortunately, when you buy a, a property like that, you, it's sort of caveat emptor. You, you have to, this is what you have. I, I think this came up in 21, if I'm not mistaken, and then the plans just didn't complete, something like that. Is that, is that right?
They did submit in 2021 for a similar design. Yeah. And then it was withdrawn. I don't know off the top of my head if it made it to a hearing or not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember it in the hearing, but I remember it because it was a neighborhood issue at that point as well. So yeah, I, I can't make the findings for FAR or for removal of the tree, but the others I don't have a problem with. I think, so what are our, our options?
So your, your options, it sounds like you either want to continue the item to a date certain or uncertain, wouldn't allow the architect and owners to revise in light of the comments that they've heard. That you, you could deny with or without prejudice if you so choose as well. The staff report has a few, but those are the listed alternatives there.
Okay. All right. So Brock, being the architect on the panel, again, I'll refer, could you make a motion?
I, I would actually like to ask if you want to move it to a date uncertain or, you know, for I would, I would think, yeah, I would think so.
Okay.
So I will move the one Redwood Avenue AP 02104408 be essentially with all of these below be postponed to another time, what, what are continue, continue the item? Yeah. To a date uncertain.
All right. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Chair Swisher.
Yay.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
A member Hull?
Yeah.
Member Wagstaff?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Four eyes, no nose.
And keep in mind that you do have the ability to appeal this to the city council. There is, what is it? How many week appeal period?
Even, there's a 10-day appeal period.
10-day appeal period and it can be appealed to the city council.
Yeah, there is no decision. So I'm
Actually, that's true. There is no decision. It's, it's in a, so it doesn't have to be appealed. Well, there you have it. From Amadeus. Well, so it is. Okay. Well, very good. Uh, next issue. Let's see, where's our agenda here? Yep. Are there any commissioner reports? Nope. No commissioner reports? Okay. I had a nice vacation. All right. So the next item is to vote for an adjournment. So all in favor of adjourning?
I oh, I moved to adjourn this meeting.
That was, that was a motion, Brock. Second. All right. All right. I call the meeting adjourned. Thank you everybody for coming.